What's up everybody, we're now in a private coaching session with me and Roger, we're gonna take it easy. And that's how it goes, no pressure on you Roger. What do you wanna do here, are you ready? What do you wanna do here Roger?
Yes, final table, that's all we're gonna do. I'm calling, not very happy but a five, we got a six.
It's the very top spot that I think you're too, I think you're okay, but I think it's so close, right? So close.
Yeah.
Open jamming like this, ah, feel bad.
He's jamming first scut off.
A five, a six, it was like, ah, feel so bad here, this is like, see they get us right up, right at the door.
Yeah, yeah, probably, he's with fourteen. He's the second biggest stack and he's jamming also into the gutter for twenty-one bigs. So his range should be ace king up.
Yeah, he's ripping into a short stack, right, and then to the big stack.
Yeah, so yeah.
But see, still very wide and very aggressive, he's doing it with all that.
Go, I'll call you.
Yeah, okay, we're deep enough, yeah, it's, it seems good. Power race.
Yeah, that, that would back to, I don't know how to play it for short test.
Oh, top spot.
I will lean to a call and if the player is Irish, I would fold probably. But I'm calling.
They're calling here. Thing is, at TPV you might have some all ins, right?
Yeah.
We can't go broke before this guy.
No.
We have to call, I guess.
I'm not, I'm not finding an all-in there.
I knew it was all in at TPV for sure, this is the Pat special. Because I call it the Pat special because Pat stacked me in a big game with it. I always find this kind of jam, but I, like, at ICM it's a bit tougher, right?
Yeah, I think it's a call, we hate it, but I think it's a call.
My goodness.
It even falls also.
Jesus Christ, how could we fold with ace king, let's call with ace.
And call with tens.
And call with tens.
Why, because what he's jamming there is, he's jamming all broadways.
Ah, because the strategy has him jamming a lot, all of the suited kings as a bluff. Because he's a big stack, yeah, he's a big stack and everyone's super short, so he's going like super aggressive here.
Do you find the king do suited there with twenty-one bigs, Louis, jamming?
Honestly, I'd be surprised if any of that this is going on and honestly, I'd be surprised if this ace king is not good enough to call. But, no, it's, I think, but, like, probably a good idea to call.
Yeah, suppose they, you, you remove the, the, the downside of the, of the shoving range, then uh, the ace king becomes, becomes more or less than a call. I don't know, uh, this is for me at all.
Yeah, I think so. Or even fives.
I'm jamming.
Jamming. Okay, so we have no rich premium, I guess that's fine. What's the race fault, but it's the general idea, right? It's not. I think it's okay.
Now, we're a little bit more deep stack leader. I think we have to, we have to bully the button here. It's a big stack, we, I think we won't, and I think I'm gonna raise. Uh, not me, but I think the, the best option is to rest, not that I'm gonna raise, but I think the best play is to raise here.
Racing here feels really bad.
I know, it does, and I'm, I'm not doing that in game, but we are the big stack with ninety-four.
I don't think that's, that's gonna be enough of a factor. Whereas to dig in these kinda hands, I think it's either call or fold. I think it's a fold in general at ICM, but since we are the big stack, maybe we could call a little bit more. Our sum is close between these two, it's never a raise.
I, 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 I don't think I call, I, I will fold already, so then I probably fold.
That's, it's more, it's more of a call. See, you have the, the, like, we are the big stack, so we can play a little bit more, but how we do it is by calling more. Not by raising more, but there's twenty percent raising, so it's a, yes, it's a good raise, right? Twenty percent, pretty high frequency.
Oh, yes, George. We are lowest in stack, we're gonna all in, easy, I think it's easy, I hope it's easy.
Yeah, I think it's also an easy argument.
Thirty-two, we're in the middle of the pack. Ah, he's going for six bigs. I think we, we can fold here, we don't have to take the risk. Stay short, nothing.
Oh my goodness, the fringe.
Yeah, it's because, I would call a ten jack suited there for five. But if, if he goes like ten bigs or twelve bigs, I would fold ten, so ten jacks suited also.
Are we ahead of anything here with jack ten all?
Yeah, nothing, yeah.
Not much.
We're flipping versus the lower pairs.
Risky.
I'm going yeah, in a way, I can imagine race fold. But it's too dangerous on the final table, I think we lose too much. Sixes. For eleven bigs, uh, if we call and lose, it's not good for us, and we've win. Now, we chip, we chip leader, so I think we have, just can fold. I, I would fold.
Okay, and what's the, the worst pair you call?
Eight.
Eight, you call, okay, so I would call here with this one. Eight is good, six is a bit too loose. Okay, so he's not, he's not jamming anything worse, I see.
And if we, if we take, if we call there and we lose, we, I think we lose more if we lose than we gain, than when we win.
And that's totally it.
I think that's, yeah. Oh, this, this doesn't look, uh, uh, in game I would fold. I think in theory, it's a jam.
I don't think it's a jam, I think I would just call. But then, so he's opening pretty wide and against his opening range, this hand should do fairly well. I don't think I'm playing queen eight, but at the same time, you know what, maybe this is just a better fold.
I think, he's ten bigs, so that's, that's why I'm choosing, I, I'm choosing to fold here.
I'm fine between calling and folding, but I think the driving factor is having a nine against late positions, not so good. But I think he's, it's too short to fold this strong of a hand, I think we're still tall, let's give it, let's see. Mixing, that's why, you know, bottom of the range, calling it like not too crazy, but it's just a fold you want to make.
It's, it's zero all-in, so I have to take, yeah. But he's same stack. Uh, I would just call, we have position. I'm not very happy, but uh, I'm gonna call.
I think I'm going on in here.
Yeah, I, I think it's merit to go all in.
I think if you have a hand like jack ten suited, you fold, a hand like ten nine suited, you fold. The hand like queen ten suited definitely folds here. Two tens, just all it.
No. It's a race.
Okay.
Let's call it that, okay, it's mixing.
The tens are not good against every position, but I thought that two tens was good enough, it's a call, you were, you were right.
Yeah, I'm not happy, because every overpair or every overcard is, uh, difficult to play. This is an easy fold, for me, it is an easy fold, I hope I'm right, yeah.
Yeah, king five maybe here, can push.
Nah, but fun, I also, to be honest. This is, this is a coffee. We are shortest. But I think we have a lot of reverse applied odds.
There's a collision effect, right? If we do not, either you get stacked, but I have a suited king.
Exactly.
Always keep in mind, at final table, suited aces and suited kings are the nuts.
Then in Charlotte.
Nope.
Thank you, Louis.
Anytime, I'm sorry to my investors, I don't know what I was thinking.
Sorry.
Very tight range. Fold.
This, this I would like to jam, because the opener is wider, he should open wider.
Yeah.
Yeah. This is, for me, it's a fold, I'm not very happy, it's a fold for me. I'm only losing here, I'm not winning anything. I'm folding.
Okay, so what's the worst pair you call here, seventh?
If I eight, so my yeah, sevens or eights, I'm, I'm with the same line.
Because I am calling here as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe that's
I'm sure seven is good. Maybe I should fold six, but I'm still calling.
Yeah.
Jesus Christ.
Seven's just correct.
On this kind of spot, seven is almost always right, sixes is too loose.
Some other spots, I forget what it was, and the, like, the eights were like, a lot of the time, you're like the, the bottom of the range you should call it. I don't, I forgot the scenarios, but I remember it, because it was eight, so that's why I'm using eight now, like, every time, I was a little bit, that's the bottom, if I don't know. This one. Think we can call. Give it up for Louis, I think I can call.
Yeah, I like three betting a little bit here. Fine as well, it's probably me mixing, right?
Yeah.
It's pure call, almost perfect.
Little bit phrase, yeah.
And then you wanna fold like queen nine, jack nine.
Your suit combos, we all, we all, all called the two to the box forty. Almost every hand. I would call.
Okay, well, I think here I think here, how do you bluff here?
Yeah, that's the problem, I don't know. The final table.
And on this kind of scenario, I want you to use every wheel. Okay, ace five, ace four, ace three, ace two, every suited wheel, I want you to use maybe a sliver of ace six, ace seven, ace eight.
The, the suited ones, not the
Uh, ace six and ace seven suited, maybe not ace eight, then I want you to use suited kings. King, so, king five suited, king four suited, king six suited, all that stuff. And you just three bet.
Okay.
And this is all you make stacks at the final table, this is what I, I, I really want you to get a hold of today. When you're bluffing at the final table, you're going with the wheels and each suited kings. Okay, just because you're blocking ace king, and aces and kings.
Yeah, we got the ace seven, ace eight, ace nine to fold.
If, if we see, if something happens, we got like good risk chemistry sometimes with these hands. That, that's why, so, or you can, okay, if you're, if you're deep enough and you have a suited ace, a wheel, a suited king, I want you to fund it. Because that's how you make chips, because people get scared and they don't know what to do against your three, that they're gonna put you on aces a lot more than the, than you actually are gonna show aces, and then, when you have it, well, they'll take a stand, you know? It keeps you aggressive and it keeps you active, at TPV, you know, you're using like, uh, at forty big blind TPV, you're using like, eye off suit hands, like king jack off, king queen off, ace jack off, these kinda things, right? At ICM, you don't use that at all, you shift totally through the wheels and the sun suited kings.
Okay, I will, uh, I'll keep that, keep that in mind, yeah. Yeah, I, I don't find them, that's why I'm binding out, uh, a lot, because I don't find three bad bluffs there, enough.
Oh, that, that's how you make chips, because like people don't know how to react, they'll play you at TPV against a three bet, fine. But if you show, show up at the final table, page amps are in, if he doesn't have a very strong hand and you start to tree that, it's tough to continue. What do you wanna do here?
I think this is a call, I don't like it, I think
No, definitely not. Because there's a five here, there's a mate here.
Damn, yeah, you're right.
We should putting pressure into the chip leak. What do you do if he just has a nice X here and he just holds?
Yeah, true.
What do you do here with king queen suited, I think that's more of an interesting spot.
King queen suited? Maybe that's, that's the bottom of the, of the calling range. Maybe even, maybe even tighter than that.
I think I'm folding king queen suited here. Maybe this, this is too tight, but
What, 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 what do you do with ace jack?
Uh, king queen suited is an easy call, ace jack is an easy call, I wanna call with ace ten off, kind of. When I call with ace eight suited, like, you can call a little bit wider, I think on the ace six. Because he's gonna do the jamming, sometimes with like hands like that shouldn't be really jamming, right? But like, there he is, right, maybe you find some extra blocker here, so when you have a hand like a king or a jack, for me, it's like very spicy. For me, this spot is an easy fold. Maybe I'm too tight though with king queen suited, but for me, it's the same idea, but the king or queen like this in your hands, you're like, ah. Bluff, you really wanna have a mate in your hand, I think you need this one, or a pair. And so your sixes are rumbling.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm, finally, this, these spots are fun difficult.
The fine call at TPV, and with a big booty, I mean, it's probably a call, right?
If there is booty, then This one. Twelve, there's eight, there's twelve, there's twenty-four. We are fifteen, we are right in the middle. I would like a call here, but uh, I can't even imagine, I can't imagine that it's just a fold, but I'm like, oh. I don't like a jam.
Why not, why do you not like a jam?
Because if you showed up with an ace, we're dominate, we're dominated.
No, we're gonna beat a lot of his aces.
Not if he calls, I think. If he calls, he calls, not with his ten off versus a jam from us. Uh, I think ace queen, ace king calls there. Any pair, we gotta, we gotta flip. Uh, king queen, I don't know if that will call, maybe the suited ones, if we jam there.
But, I think like, his range is gonna be polarized, right? Like, with the high, strong equity hands, he's gonna just rip. But he's gonna min raise with like the worst and the best, so he's polarizer, and I, I think against a polarized range, our ace jack suited is in a great, great shape. He's gonna steal for the times he's bluffing, and we're gonna rumble for the times he wants to play, but we're still in a fine shape, and he's at risk as well, going broke here before this die. But that's the main component of this hand.
And, and that's why, because of that, I'm taking his range stronger and less polarized. More to, towards value, but that's my thought process, I, you can be right.
He still has a bottom of the range that he's been raising right there.
Okay, okay.
So I like shit ripping here in his face, just going all in. Playing is also a good strategy.
It's, it's not, not bad, you would call.
Like, with this stuff here, you know, he has like a lot of like min raises that we're kind of fine against. I, I think people are gonna min raise, like king queen, king jack as well, you know? And then who knows what they do with it after you push.
Yeah. Makes sense. Uh, this is an easy fold for me.
Well.
You're, you're disagree?
No, I think this is fine, it's a fine fold, but where do your bluffs come from?
I don't think I can have bluff with versus
Yeah, we're gonna have many here, but always think about your suited aces and suited kings, if we have any, it comes from these kinda heads.
Yeah, but he, he's opening under the gun with fifteen bigs, so, I don't know, yeah.
Nine, queen nine, queen ten, queen jack, king jack, queen, king ten, there's a lot here. King jack off, ace ten off, so we're tapping in the money here, you know, he's gonna fold half of this range, right? If we three bet then, he has still folds fifty percent of the time. I think he's gonna call with like ace nine or ace eight.
I know.
Probably we get ace ten off to fold with ace eight suited, so ace is clean a little bit.
Yeah, 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 okay.
I think it's not too, not a good spot to take, but it doesn't wanna do it with this one, but you see the idea, right?
The suited, the suited aces, he wants to tap into.
If we are to do it, this is the, the kind of
I'm folding. That this net is gonna fold. Forty, with forty bigs and fifty bigs behind.
Yeah, but you have to make a stack, but I guess you're right, you're right?
Yeah, yeah. This I'm calling, I'll end, I mean Oh, these have slippers of, uh, call, yeah. This one is just a fold, don't have to camp, bet, battle there.
No, not, none of that.
I think we have to defend all the suited combos at thirty, forty bigs, so call. I think I wanna go all in. No.
It's a call, but I don't think it matters, right?
If we call and the other guy jams it, you have to call, cannot fold.
Yeah, but the difference is, here he never has a bluff.
Yeah.
As now, he might have one percent sometimes.
Would you ever think about bluffing there and not spot?
Nope.
Nobody does.
No, but maybe, that, you know, the, the machine is optimistic.
You're the maniac. We are eighteen? It has some slippers of, uh, I think we have to, go, if, do we have to go all in, no, it's too, nah, I'm just folding.
Oh, it's an all-in?
Really, I think
Bottom of the suited ones are going, just because it gets ace eight and ace seven and ace nine to fold.
Yeah, okay. What was it again, what we have to call, I think it was like something like ace eight or something, it's jack maybe? But twelve, twelve, everybody's same stack. I think we have to call.
No.
Oh, it's just on the border.
We're losing our shirt, Roger.
Yeah, that's, uh, that explains why I'm losing. I want to set mine here. Can go easy off the hand, gonna call here. Deep enough, yeah, I'm
Seems fine, oh my goodness.
I've had some calls, but mostly falls.
I know, it's the decapal effect, you must fold nines and eights here, because you're blocking the bottom of his opening range.
Or the bottom of his opening range is eight, eight X?
Well, he's opening like ace nine, king nine, ten nine, and king eight. I would expect people to maybe play nine eight suited or ace eight suited for sure. Oh, it's blocking this part, and pocket nines and pocket eights, so it's more likely he has better.
Okay.
Wanna sidestep, but it's a tough fold, honestly.
I'm not, uh, yeah.
At final table, it's very tough. What do you think about sevens here? And then sixes?
We are six hundred, I think, uh, I think we have to go for it.
And then sixes?
Sixes? I think that the border is with the sevens, I think sixes we have to fold.
That's what I would, that's what I will do from now on, I will fold six and always call with sevens.
I think that's the right.
Goodness, to fold.
Versus echo players, we have to call, the thirty percent. But the sixes, uh, are almost the same.
Eight there, you need.
There is the eight again, so I think if I'm default with eight, then I'm doing, uh, pretty good, okayish, yeah. Nines, okay, but, then look at stack distribution. We have a five, six, ten, we are eleven. We have a five, six, ten, we are eleven.
Oh my goodness.
And he's jamming under the gun, uh, he's jamming on first position. But still, I think we have to go for it, I'm not really.
Might be a fold.
It might be a fault, yeah, I agree. This might be a fold.
Now what? I think this is one.
Okay, push the full button.
Because if we go, go, if he just has like king nine and the king comes, what are we gonna do?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It worked before these two guys.
Yeah, there will be a disaster.
Jesus Christ.
But yeah, I don't know the difference between nine and tens, to be honest, in that spot, because with tens, I'm not ha- very happy to call there either.
Then it, then it's just too strong for for twelve big ones.
Yeah.
Nines and eights?
With with eights, I'm I'm thinking I'm easy, no, not easy, but in this case, I'm gonna, yeah, fold. And nines is like already doubting, yeah, yeah, okay. Okay, we can go, makes sense, let's see, okay. I'm falling, but we have nothing to do here, I'm folding.
Yeah.
Six is calling, I'm, I would fold sixes and. Seven, sixes I would fold also, sevens I would call probably.
Take it.
Yeah, I think, um.
Yeah, we, we called sevens, right?
Yeah, but this is not a good scenario. So you're in the middle, middle of the pack. I think we, now we cannot be bad fold then.
We could just fold here.
Yeah, that's fold.
What, what do you do with sevens?
I think I would jam eights, uh, fold sevens. I think that's the. The best.
Pocket nines there, what about pocket nine?
Nines I would jam. King, queen suited, I would, don't know.
Think about that, it's like, we have sixteen big blinds, pretty deep. With nines, we block ace nine, king nine, pocket nine. I'm sure.
Yeah. I really, I don't know, uh. I think it's, I'm I'm folding here because I don't know.
Okay, that's probably very good.
Holding it positive, positive, uh, positive fee.
That's probably very good, if you fall any because you don't know, I like that answer a lot. I wish I I found more of like, I don't know, so I thought. Yeah, it, with pocket nine, I knew, with pocket eight, I knew, because you block too much, you block this, like ace nine, pocket nine.
Mm-hmm.
Stuff like that, so.
Uh. Yeah, let's go. If we, if we hit, then we gonna, gonna kick him out or not?
Well.
Everybody, everybody is, everybody is, uh.
I would fold here.
I would go. But I pushed. I was fold.
He's opening in a bunch of big stacks and this hand does poorly at I C M, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm I'm thinking about getting, getting him out of the final table, if I ma- make a hands. Well, you're right.
You can either like, you need a stronger range, somebody else is gonna do that dirty work there. You don't need to get, get your hand this dirty, like queen nine here, queen ten.
Yeah, that even, that sounds not strong enough versus this open, to be honest.
Well. Like, as you see here, I think the general idea, the nine here is bad to have in your hand, the eight is also bad.
Yeah.
Probably sticking to tens and like aces is probably good.
Yeah, okay. I need to fold more in this, those kind of spots.
Yeah.
I like to go with this kind of hands, fifty bigs. Problem is, is that the big blind is a chip leader. And he's gonna, I saw, I think, a lot when I call. And the cutoff and he has nothing we can do about it, so maybe a fold is better, but. If the guy don't uh three bet enough, I call here, but I think default to fold is better.
Yeah, what about having the nine against cut off?
Um.
The good or bad?
Uh. I think that's bad because we blocked the, the, the bottom of his opening range.
Yeah, exactly, so this is for me a kind of a fold. Not a one super, but you see the other nines, it's like. It's strong, strong enough, but it's like the floor, right? You make zero.
I will let this go.
What about, so sixes as well?
Sixes as well, sevens I call.
Mine versus mine should be a call.
Yeah, but uh chippy fee, but I C M.
Well, since it's blind versus blind, he's ripping a really wide ranger.
Yeah, probably right. I think it's still a fold though.
Yeah, still a fold, sevens.
Sevens, yeah.
It's almost always second, right?
Tens is easier.
Yeah, it's all right.
It's a call, yeah.
The bottom.
Yeah, that's. I think I'm in game, I would call it, I am there also, but that's bad. Um, this is fifteen, uh, no, we're gonna fold. Do we? Yeah, we're gonna fold. Fifteen big blinds, there's ten, there's a fifteen, there's a nine, there's ten. I think it's a fold, but uh, I can ima- I can imagine that I'll make a mistake of calling here, but I think it's a fold in theory.
And then what do you do with tens?
I think tens is also a fold, I think we need jacks, to be honest, very tight.
I think I called tens, I fold nines.
Yeah.
I see a nine already next to me. Zero. But tens I.
Then I have to go, yeah. Hmm. And can we three bet? I think the cutoff S nine is opening and the button is tens is opening, so we need to be one pip under the opening, I think for blows. I would erase here. But it's I C M. Yeah, maybe that's better to, uh, to collect chips, but raise, it has some raises.
Yeah, 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 no, it's worth something, it's worth some shenanigans, feel. Strong enough to either call or. Uh, three bet.
But if there's a Brazilian there, I don't know, I think.
You can three bet, yeah.
He's gonna four bet your bluff for that.
Oh my goodness.
What's this? What is this? Um, I think in practice, in reality, I'm gonna call, but I don't know if that's good, but yeah, let's make, let's go.
Oh my goodness. This is, have you seen my shirt, Roger?
It's, it's gone, my shirt also.
Um, how is this not a call? Would you write a call with ace nine or king then suited?
Fifteen, eighteen, fifteen.
Yeah.
We are the, we are the ones with the, the biggest risk premium.
Yeah. It felt like a close call, right? So probably, if we think it's close, it's probably, I probably need to use it tighter.
Yeah, uh, uh, we do.
Okay.
Yeah, I see, um. And he's the chip leader.
Pretty, he's the chip leader.
I'm just gonna let him roll, run over me a little, gonna fold.
Oh, I don't think folding is good, I think it, I wanted to raise first. But then I realized it's the chip leader, we don't get to bully him, so we just gonna call. Can't fold that.
A, but.
He's too wide here, he's opening.
Yeah.
Wide.
Yeah. But the, the, the problem is, I think, I heard Burdis one time say that, even if you hit like top pair. And I C M, uh, environment, then versus the chip leader, you can. Put maximum pressure on your, but you're gonna stack off with ace seven when an ace comes. I don't know, if he's gonna bet, 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 I don't know. But yeah, I don't know, uh, I would fold here versus chip leader, but I think in theory, you're right and you should call.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Although I'm not defending this one, honestly. But yeah, this feels like a call.
The, the real problem starts after the, after the flop, if it goes, uh, if it goes better.
For sure.
Then I don't know, uh, I made a pre-flop good decision, but now what?
Now what?
Now, now we're in trouble.
And that's a part of the issue, right? We don't have post-flop trainers yet for I C M, but we have a, a guide right at the beginning.
Hmm.
We, we asked, we just have the, the, the pre-flop ranges for now, so it's a guide, right? But.
Uh, yeah.
Don't have I C M post-flop yet.
Yeah, prob- they will probably, uh, get it uh within a year or something. Um. King said, I'm, I'm just folding, I think it's an easy fold.
Yeah, I agree.
Be honest.
Yeah.
Oh, it has some calls, I don't know, but okay. Forty. Um. Ace ten, small by big blind, I would call, but not first, but then forty, his range is right, but then still. We are second in chips, so I'm just gonna let it go, ace jack I would call, I would fold this.
Yeah, I agree, I felt like I wanted to bow, so I told myself I need to be one bit tighter.
Yeah, ace jack, that was right also, that's nice, good to see. Hmm, it could be doing a little bit of, uh. Stealing here.
Yeah, you want to three bet?
I think that's a race, yeah, race fold then of course, no, it's just a fold.
Love it, you need a suited next.
Um, oh, to, to bluff, uh, to re- uh.
Thing is too short, we don't really wanna three bet.
Yeah, and if he calls, we want to have some equity that we can flop something that is strong enough.
Yeah.
Yeah, king four is not, 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 not that good. We, that's the chip here, if I see correct.
Yep.
Um. Jesus Christ. Uh, I think, yeah. I'm gonna play this, uh, cautiously, I'm gonna call here.
I don't know, it feels like a race, I mean, let's see.
Yeah, I understand, yeah, it's.
We don't have a calling range at all.
But we raised to five, he's gonna call, both will come ace. Then three, gonna see bets, he's gonna call. That is trouble, but okay, yeah. Uh, this should be a call or not, yeah, it's easy call. No, not that easy, it's the bottom. Tens is a fold there, oh. Okay, okay, okay. Hmm, I'm folding. Yeah. Who can that, king ten is a race, or only? Eighteen. I think we're not happy, but uh, gonna call it off, e- even without, even with the stack of six, we have to make a stand somewhere, I think this is it.
I also think this is a call.
Yeah.
Ace ten is a clear fold.
Yeah. Uh, versus the hide, versus the low jack, I. Can imagine that this is a fold, but I think this is, uh, should be a call. This and ace ten suited, maybe. Yeah, I think something like that. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna call here.
A pip off, this is exactly what we said, Roger, I didn't wanna say it because I wasn't sure. But if I think it's a call, you need to be one bit tighter.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Because we're extremely good at finding the one tip out every time.
Now making the correct adjustments, yeah.
But the main lesson for today. What do we do?
I think I'm gonna bully him a little, gonna raise.
Yes, this is what we wanna go for, full frequency. It's safe, that's a little fancy, but what's the worst hand you call here? Say you have king ten, king nine suited.
Uh, but four, yeah, it's, we're only four, uh, so the risk. The, the risk premium goes down once the, uh. Amount of people go down, so you have less risk premium. We are the second biggest stack. So king nine off, king nine suited. I think we're just folding, I think king ten is probably, king ten suited is probably the bottom. So, and then keeping the logic a, a little bit alive, king jack suited should be a call. So this is a fold.
And you fold king ten?
Offsuit, offsuit.
Suited.
I'm falling, I'm falling king ten suited.
I would definitely call king ten, I think I'm calling king nine as well. King nine.
Oh, it even goes king five.
Yeah, because it's so, like, it's four big blinds.
Yeah, that's true, but it's like, uh, it's. Twenty-five, it's like twenty-two percent of our stack, something like that, four bigs and we have eighteen.
Yeah, 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 but still, like.
Pretty, uh.
Suited nines, good enough, most suited kings are good enough.
Okay, I need to widen up there. We have the suited ace again, uh, we're gonna raise.
Yeah. Ninety-two percent, oh, we got lucky though.
Yeah, the other ones were not.
But it, it's the same idea, right? Suited kings, suited aces, it's gonna mess around in this area a lot. Doesn't matter, we find some, that's all we're gonna build, that's how we make kind of chips safely, right? Because they're just gonna fold to the trigger.
Yeah, they're overfo- they're gonna overfold in that spot a lot.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I know I.
This one, what do you think?
Because of the sick picks and because of his early-ish position, he raises also with the height left to act. Um, I'm gonna fold.
Yeah, I think so as well with the six, yeah. But the wheels, wanna play a little.
So, still, and I want to jam, I don't find ace five suited jam there versus his open there.
Yeah.
With his stack.
That's a bluff, right? We need to balance ace king and ace queen.
Not true. I'm gonna jam, right?
Think we could go either way between jamming or raising small, I think it's strong enough to raise small. Raise small call up.
Yeah, could be.
And then I think like nines and less, I wanna jam.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, hang on, nines are, would be blocking the bottom of his opening range.
Hmm.
So, I might call with nines and eights or. But jams with sevens and jam with tens. Uh, three bet small with ten, I think it's strong enough, let's see. Oh, it's jamming tens and nines, calling eights and sevens and six.
Okay.
Uh.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, yeah. And then we jam the, the, the aces, kings and queens doesn't need protection, so we can raise.
Yeah, see, it's not strong enough to min raise. You'd need like jacks.
Yeah.
I thought it.
Ace queen. Now we're gonna chat with you. Something else we can do with this stack?
I agree.
This gonna be, yeah, it's a call. And nine is the bottom. Oh, ten is the bottom. Okay.
Yeah.
Equal stacks. Oh, just one moment. Um, this is three-way. Um, I think I'm just gonna jam here. Maybe that's too wide. Too deep to jam. Moment, uh. Okay, um. Or raise? Yeah. I sometimes make adjustment to raise there or call and then did a pair and then got dominated by king queen or ace king or ace jack.
I would just get out of the way here. It's a short business. Want to get some business done with the other mid-stack. I don't think we need to play here.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Uh, so you, you, you can actually try to bully him, but.
Yeah, yeah, yes, too. I'm just gonna call here. I think it's fine.
Give me a sack, Roger, and somebody's ringing at my door.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Other problem.
I can eat.
Um, yeah, I could call. I think it's, it's fine to call. Uh, we, I don't think we can have a fold. A raise could be an option.
No, no, that's good.
I think a jam is fine.
Yeah, time to deal some chips. Uh, we have the right deck here, right?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Just choosing just other, like, combos.
What about this one?
I think it's just a fold, but I don't.
What about ace, ace ten?
I think ace ten is a call. Ace nine is a fold. I think ace ten is the bottom.
Ace ten is a call, ace nine is mixing.
Yeah.
Very nice.
Uh, yeah. I hate those kind of combos in this spot. Where we can three bet and if we get a lot of action from the bigger stacks, we can fold and we can play versus MP.
I think it's just a fold.
Yeah, could be.
No, it's a three bet, you're right. Strong enough to three that.
Uh, and we can fold if, if it's, uh, throw too much action. Um, I think with six bigs, I think, uh, Paris and all, and yeah, I think we can go with.
Oh.
No, call with six bigs.
Six big, crazy.
I'm not, uh, gonna do that.
You need to be cautious here. Short stack, no risk premium.
Uh, yeah, okay. If we hit, when we gonna go for it?
Yeah, very interesting.
We can hit a lot of things. Straight draw, flush draw, gonna play with everything. Uh, three deuce versus this. No, it's just a fold. I haven't thinking about it. Just fold.
Yeah. Uh, it's suited, right? Maybe it's two five.
Nah.
I think it's too tight to fold.
I think four five, I think it was, uh, it was four five at the bottom, I think, if I remember. Oh, no, it's a call. Okay.
Suited stuff. You can fold like this part of the deck or but three deuce suited is just too.
We're pretty deep. Uh, to be honest, uh, I'm going, to be honest, I want to use this one as a.
No, no, no. You, you have bluffs from ace suited, like the wheels and the suited kings, nothing else.
Okay, then we fold.
Oh my goodness, it's a, wants to call. Look, look at this here. This is the perfect spot for it. Suited ace, suited kings.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
In the deck, in there.
Chip, uh, it's a chip leader there. I think it's the same with the last example. We're gonna call. And, uh, yeah, we're gonna call.
Yeah, no, it's a fold, but you can mix, right? Both are good.
I'm jamming.
Yeah, I think that's good. Raise small.
Yeah. If we raise, raise small, then it's gonna accomplish the same. It's gonna call, yeah, exactly the same range as when we raised smaller goal in. I thought, but that's fine.
Just call here?
Yeah, yeah. Gonna call. Uh, nah, nah. Suited aces and suited kings, you said. King eight, good enough. Wanna raise?
Yes.
Raise it.
Let's go. Oh my goodness.
No, it's not. It's king seven. No, it's, it's, huh? What's the difference?
Well, the difference here is, uh, the stack distribution. There's a short stack, the big stack is left to act. So this is a spot where we wanna be cautious, basically.
Yeah. I'm jamming here.
Yeah. Oh no.
No, ace jack.
Oh no.
Ouch, GG.
GG.
Uh, what are you doing? Three and a half? Suit, uh, I think with suited, we wanna call. Yeah, call.
No, we wanna jam.
Yeah, most, yeah, most, uh, jam.
Five days, we can go, right?
You should call, yeah, yeah.
Hold the floor.
Not, not an easy. I, I would call with ace nine suited there. To be honest.
What about this one?
Uh, yeah, we're fifteen, we're shortest. Yeah, we're gonna put a lot of pressure on it. Yeah, yeah.
Well, we made, we made seventy-five hands. That's good enough, I think.
Yeah.